Any comments on the minutes, anyone? Okay, then we'll do a roll call. Brian Winslow is a yes. Stephanie Arroyo?
Yes.
Shane Wells?
Yes.
Shirley Glennon?
Yes.
Jessica Boudreaux?
Yes.
Great, so those minutes passed unanimously. Thank you, and we're on to our principals' report.
Mr. Winslow, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I just want to let everyone in the audience know that if you're phoning in right now and would actually like to do a video, we are testing something. We are currently live on YouTube right now. If you go to the SAU 44 webpage, the main webpage, it will be right on the home screen and you'll be able to watch the video, not just listen.
Fancy.
Working on it. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Winslow. Sorry to interrupt. I just want to let you know that it finally kicked in.
Yeah. Well, and thank you for doing that. We're trying it out. I appreciate it. So, principals' report.
Good evening. Our report begins on page 11 of your packet. We tried to give an update of what we're working on, both to wrap up this year and then also in terms of planning for next year, whatever that will look like. So in terms of summer facilities plans, replacing lights in the lobby and main office to more efficient lighting, that was something that we had included in the budget for next year. Cleaning, the HVAC ducts, we've started a cycle where we clean a certain segment each year, so we'll continue that this summer. Removing some old shelving that's built in and no longer sturdy, so that we can make room for new storage. That's also been included in this coming year's budget. Updating the woodchips on the playground, completing the second entrance door near the kindergarten. That was something you had approved for surplus funds, so it will be started before June 30th, but probably not finished until over the summer. And then performing general maintenance and painting as needed. The rock wall will also be installed at the time of the report, we thought June 1st. Now it looks like maybe May 29th. Stay tuned. Apparently it changes every five minutes, but we are looking forward to that getting installed sometime soon. We're still trying to figure out summer program planning. The state has not yet issued guidance on that, so we're sort of making sure that we have contingency plans in place for whatever they recommend, whether it be onsite, remote, or some combination of the two. Mrs. Sholand has been working on student selection, so that as soon as we know what our plan will be, we can send out invitations for them. I've been working on staffing. And then program will be pretty easy to execute, whether we're onsite or remote. We just need to know which it is. We are trying to plan for next year, so we've got a committee that's working to develop a master schedule. Our first meeting for that is tomorrow. We are working on class placement in terms of homeroom for K, well, homeroom for K through 8, and then specific pod placement, pre-algebra, algebra, that type of stuff for 7 and 8. And that, those meetings will happen at the end of May. We're working on kindergarten registration and trying to put all of that paperwork online and make that digital. And then hoping that we'll be able to do our typical kindergarten screening that we would do in May and August. We are working on hiring. We have the 8th grade ELA position and the 7th grade math position. Interview is scheduled for next Friday. We're doing those via Zoom. And then, we'll see. Right now, I don't know about anybody else, but we'll see if we have any other hiring to do. And then also, we finalized who will be teaching and what grade levels next year. We know that we're reducing in some grade level the number of sections and increasing in others, so Mrs. Piggly will be moving from grade 1 to grade 2. And Mrs. Bonjiani will be moving from grade 4 to grade 3. Neither one will have to move rooms, which is great news for the custodial group. And then Mr. Tucker has elected to teach 7th grade English Language Arts next year, so we'll hire for 8th grade. And Ms. Matlak has elected to teach 8th grade math, so we'll hire for 7th grade math. And then upcoming events, Teacher Appreciation Week is this week. Mr. Alfred has taken the lead on planning for that. He's done some raffles and videos and, I don't know, Adrian, do you want to say anything more about teacher appreciation?
It has not looked as it would traditionally. Obviously, it's been kind of a different scenario to show appreciation. I mean, no matter what it is, a debt of gratitude to our hardworking staff, I can't really put into words very well, but it is amazing to see how much our staff has rallied and made sure that our kids are getting everything they need from the minute they're on till way past the workday. And today, I happened to see Ellen Gibson, and when I saw her at her house, she was on the computer with a whole bunch of her kids. It was amazing to see their smiling faces, so. I'm trying to, you know, myself and Ms. Young have been trying to do whatever we can to show our appreciation, but the amount they're doing is beyond phenomenal. So, we're trying to do everything we can, but they're doing an amazing job.
And then we're still in the process of exploring end-of-year celebration options. We just got some guidance from the state this past week. And then we are still figuring out a timeline and method for exchanging materials with students and families. We still have a lot of student personal belongings in the building, and they have a lot of school textbooks, library books, instruments, computers. So Mr. Alfred's been working on developing a plan for that, and we're thinking that will happen right after the last student del in June. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Robert for a technology update and a discussion of new website platform.
All right, thank you. I'll try to be actually real brief. It's business as usual. From the last time I talked to everybody here at this meeting, things have actually leveled off pretty well. Things seem to be going well on the teacher-student end. I've been supporting them for different software issues and hardware issues that pop up here and there, and taking care of a few other things. I'm trying to, I've actually been able to catch up on a few summer things as well, trying to get ahead on a few things. Servicing equipment, stuff like that, new software stuff going in, security things, stuff like that. So that's just kind of what has been going on for me since last time we talked, as well as a potential project that we had a demonstration on about a month ago. It's a content management system, what I call now a content management communication system, is what it really is. And it's a platform that basically they host a website. It's a hosted website service. It also incorporates notification services and an actual app that goes on a phone that incorporates all of that, so that people can get all this information on their mobile devices. And we were looking at that for a couple of reasons. One was to make more, market more of who we are as a school and what kind of information we want to get out and get it out in a more dynamic mode than a static mode. What I mean by that is putting something on the website and then maybe it stays there for a month or whatever. We're looking at something more that would be rotated and have very pertinent information for that exact timeframe. So it's a three module type process or a three module solution that has a website, it has an app, and it has a notification service that can send stuff through phone, email, social media, and get the word out to what we're trying to get done in the school. And so we came up with a couple of solutions.
Dave, is this the document you're referencing, so I can share it with the board?
Yes.
Okay.
We have that in our packets, I believe.
You don't have it in your packet. I sent it as a separate email because it came in late.
Oh, well, thank you.
Here it is, right on the screen for you.
Excellent. So the board got a presentation on this from one of the vendors. And the other vendor, there's actually originally three vendors we were considering for something like this. The third vendor that you don't see the information on had enough issues that concerned me that I no longer wanted to consider them for my own reasons. Basically, for having it work correctly. I didn't even want to get into it, so that's why they're not on the screen. So the two sites that we were going to consider are Apogee and Campus Suite. I don't really feel the need to re-show, have another demo for Campus Suite. And the reason why, if you read right above what you see here on the screen, it's pretty much the exact same thing. In fact, when I was evaluating both of these services, I'm really not seeing a lot of differences. There's a couple little marks on here that you see, a couple minuses next to some yeses, really minor stuff. In fact, one of them is already, they're already changing under notification service. Both of them are trying to get on Instagram. There's a couple of issues with Instagram, and they're both trying to get on Instagram. They're not yet. So, again, minor issues between the two services, training. One does a little better job on training than the other one does. One, one has, for building the site, when you build anything new, obviously, it's going to be some work involved. One of the vendors actually wanted to make a point that made sure that I understood how much work it would be. So I was kind of assuming that maybe their solution to get running might be a little more difficult to get going, but that's still, I'm assuming a little bit on that one, but I figured I'd write it down anyway. And, you know, for delegating work and stuff, management, one does a little better than the other. One lets me see everything. One doesn't quite so much. Really, though, in the end, for both of these solutions, it comes down to cost. And actually, the Campus Suite solution is actually already being used by one school already in the district, at least one piece of it. So if we wanted to do it SEU-wide somewhere down the road, not now, but if that ever happened, it might be an easier process. I'm not sure if that's something to be considered. But basically, in the end, they do pretty much the same. They give you a dynamic website with the ability to put information up there quickly and have it look actually professional. And sorry, my internet's acting up. I apologize. I'm out here in the woods. There we go. And, but the ability also to go into mobile devices in such a way that it's a comfortable feel, one or two clicks, you get all the information you need, and be able to integrate all of our other online tools like Google and such, so that everything is integrated in, all the calendars, Google Classroom, all that stuff, so that people can see what they need to see, when they need to see it. Not when does Steve finally get around to posting something on the Google site or whatever. It's there pretty much when we want it there all the time. And we can delegate the work to people that are actually in that, like, say, if you want the the phys ed department to do something on their website, it's just much easier to do it this way than the way we're doing it now. Right now, we have a solution that works, but it could be doing a lot more. And as we go through, the years go through, we have more people interconnected all the time. They're going to demand more stuff. They want to have more information. They're going to want to be able to get things quicker. Managing this kind of behemoth over time will get more intense. And I think even though it costs money to do these kind of solutions, you're going to get a product on the other end. And if we don't do something like this, over time, it's going to require the people that are doing some of this work more hours to get it done. So we're kind of probably going to pay something eventually anyway, either in time or in money. So I wanted to give this to, these are the two solutions that look the best. They pretty much do exactly the same thing. If money wasn't an option, I might choose one or the other, but they're so close that one has a significant cost difference, and that's pretty much why I would recommend that product. So, and it's kind of a, I think, a substantial cost difference myself. But, I mean, that's, I deal with, you know, $1,000 to me is $1,000. So, but that's just my thoughts on it. If I had to choose between the two right now, I think Campus Suite would be the one to go with. I'm not seeing any huge benefits to the other one that you had the presentation on, and the money is significantly higher. So I mean, if I can answer any questions specifically on that, I can do that, but that's pretty much the overall gist of it.
Okay, does anybody have questions for Mr. Robert? And if you do, just for people who can't see us, if you just say your name when you ask them.
Yeah, this is Shirley. Can, am I muted?
No.
No, we can hear you.
I'm not. It just didn't highlight me. So I just wanted you to maybe explain a little bit more the difference in price with One Call Now. Is there any overlap with that? Is One Call something we're keeping?
One Call Now has already been taken out of the equation on these, if we got either system, we would get rid of One Call Now.
Okay, and you don't think you would need to keep One Call for like a certain amount of time for transition?
No, because if we, if we, it would depend on when we went with the solution. If we went with it very soon, then we'd have an overlap anyway. Because we'd be good, we'd be good through July 1st and, and really in July, if we, because we have Alma, and Alma has its own tool as well, we could get around without it for an overlap.
Okay. I was just thinking with moving data, sometimes you get some hiccups and things like that.
You're right. You're correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Shane Wells? So, hey, Steve, how are you? So, are there references, right?
Yes.
Other schools using the product, yes. Doesn't seem to have as many clients, so there's only, the other one in our district's the only one?
Okay, no. I, what I did, I wanted to know who was going to be using it the way we would use it. And right now, there's only one other school that uses all three modules in New England. They have a lot of 700 right now in the country that are doing all three. But that's districts, rather, not schools, but districts. So Nottingham's not counted in that. So, I mean, in my line of work, having one district next to you has it really isn't as important. In fact, even the other company only has a company, they have one in New Lime. Is that the name of the town, New Lime? I can't remember. But they gave me a couple of main references because they were just easier and they were actually closer physically. But as far as how close they are physically doesn't really matter so much. In the digital world, it really doesn't matter, but yeah, just the one in New England using all three clients or all three modules.
So, how many in New England are you using Apogee? Do you know that?
A handful. There's a handful of them. A few in Maine, one in New Hampshire, I think. That's it. The, Apogee has a bigger client base than Campus Suite does. I would say about double nationwide.
So, can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
I don't know how anybody else feels, but I apologize. I didn't do any research on this beforehand. But I'd just like to look into this a little bit more personally on my own before we go ahead and vote for this. I know we have a little time before the end of the school year, if we're going to use end of school year funds for this, or we put in the budget, whatever you want to do. Can we postpone this to the next meeting to make a decision if that's okay with everybody? I just, I'm just a little weary about the references part of it. I'd just like to dig into that a little bit more.
Yeah. Mr. Wells, I was going to make the same recommendation, so I agree with you. Thank you.
If you want, I can get, I can get an exact list if you want me to send it up.
Yeah, that would be great, Steve. If you could, like, some local schools in the area that have Apogee and the other district actually that's using, I know they're not using all three platforms. But, yeah, so we can give them a call. Maybe they went through the same decision-making process that we're going through.
Yep, I can do that.
Cool. All right, so I put it on the next agenda. Is that okay?
That sounds great. Yep.
Okay.
So technically, we're still in our principals' report. Are there, Ms. Young, do you have any, anything else to add?
Can I stop the screen share?
Yeah, I can stop it.
Hang on.
No, that is all I have for you at this time. Next time, I will have some names and information for you for the and D. Stroud Award that the school board presents at graduation. So I'll have that for you next time, but that is all we have for tonight, unless you have any questions or comments.
Any questions for Ms. Young? Okay, now move on to our curriculum director's report.
Good evening. This is Kathleen Sholand speaking, for those of you that are online. As I've done in the past, I've broken my report up into the three goals, and I literally separated the goal statements along with each of those. And in addition to having some information that I want to mention about social studies, a lot of what I have in my report has to deal with futuring. Where Will Northwood would be come next year. So when we think about our academic system, our stay-at-home order, the remote teaching, the distance learning that has been going on has created a break in our stride. You know, how can we use this to our advantage? How can we learn from this experience? What are we going to keep? What do we need to let go? What features of our academic system are going to evolve? It's an opportunity to be like almost hyperreflective because of this very abrupt change to what we've needed to do. And as I mentioned the last time, we also now have every single one of the teachers at Northwood involved in digital distance learning in one capacity or another. That's phenomenal. That was not the case before the early part of March. So how can we capitalize on that for our academic system? When you think about our teachers, they've become attuned to the digital learning platform. How can we recognize and promote effective instructional practices and increase access to innovative approaches that are developing? The research and projections for educational advancement did not have a pandemic in mind. So it's important to be reading and attentive to what's happening right now as we look at that future for our digital instruction. And for students, they are also likewise engaged in distance learning. They're not in their physical classrooms. But they have brand-new learning experiences, increased flexibility, and demonstrating evidence of their learning. You know, how do we need to capitalize on that? How can we rethink our use of intervention and enrichment structures to support the differences in student preparedness so that they can continue to learn at the next grade level, but also carry forward with those positive experiences that they can take out of this? And even for our parents, they have become an absolutely integral part of their child's education. They are truly part of our educational system at Northwood. How can we continue and enhance that parent-school partnership to educate every child? So it is definitely through problem-solving in collaboration with not only our teachers, but with our parents that we can look to address these questions. For Goal 3, talking about ongoing improvement to curriculum instruction, the social studies curriculum, My World Interactive, which is a Pearson education product, print resources will be arriving this month. We have for kindergarten, first and second, they are, those teachers will have activity guides that they will use and incorporate into their instruction. In grade 3, we have purchased student editions and digital access in addition to teacher editions, so now students will have a learning platform at 3rd grade that is digital. For 4th grade, teachers are going to have digital access because we still tend to capitalize on the New Hampshire resources in 4th grade. And we will make it available and take advantage of those resources that have become digitized during this time. 5th grade will be working with a digital platform for students. 6th grade, because there is a transition, and those students will also have access to a science digital platform, we're looking to have student journals as also a way to encourage their communication of their ideas and their thinking in response to prompts in their classrooms. And in 7th and 8th grade, those students will have digital courseware for their learning. So we're very excited about that. We're even hoping to provide some professional development at the very end of the school year to teachers so that they can take their print resources and their digital license with them into the summer and get ready for September. In terms of other curriculum instruction things in general, it's that parallel relationship between curriculum, which is what we're teaching, and the instruction, which is how we're teaching, in partnership with any of the best practices that are coming out of this time are going to inform how we move forward. Our learning environments might also be different next year, and that's something that we can look and build upon, would have been the good pieces that have happened this spring. And for the last goal, Goal Number 8, which is implementing a system of academic and non-academic performances to communicate and facilitate improvement. As mentioned in the last, by Ms. Young, in our last board meeting, we had shifted to record having teachers focus on math and English Language Arts in the younger grades, and then in the upper grades, they are also focusing on science and social studies as they're more capable of interacting with a lot of more screen time. We did hold Zoom meetings for all grade bands in English Language Arts on one Friday, and Zoom meetings with all grade band teams' teachers for math on another Friday to select those high-impact priority standards that we felt were not only key for, that teachers felt that they could get evidence of student learning during the spring, but also would best prepare students as they transition to their new grade level next year. So we are trying our best to hold together the coherence and rigor that we would expect in a distance-learning environment and looking forward to envisioning what September will bring. Thank you.
Great. Are there any questions for the curriculum director? Okay, I had a comment that I just wanted to share. It was actually a suggestion that came to the Northwood School Board Facebook page, and it kind of fits in real, I could have shared it, I guess, at any point, but it fits in, I think, real well with what you were saying about trying to learn from this experience as much as we can. And the suggestion was to survey parents to get their perspective of what they're doing at home and how things are going. So I just wanted to pass that along, but, you know, I think this is such an unusual time, and I do think there's a lot of good that could come out of, out of what we're doing, and I appreciate that you're, you're looking at it through that lens as well, so thank you. Anything else for the curriculum director? Okay, thanks. I don't think we have any policies in our packet tonight, though we did talk at committee updates, we did have a policy committee meeting, so we'll have an update there for our next meeting. So we're on to our superintendent report.
I have no personnel report for you tonight. The majority of my report will be talking about COVID-19 and the updates. So a few days ago, we got end-of-the-year guidance. About end-of-the-year activities. Of course, the safest way is to do those remotely. I do know the administration has some plans in the works. I also think some of those plans may be a surprise, and I don't want to go too deeply into them. We're expecting guidance on summer. In mid-May, I've met with the administrators and said we need to plan for one of three possibilities: in-person, hybrid, or remote, and your administration has done that. So we're just waiting for that guidance, and then we'll give you a board update about that. The commissioner has started a task force on reopening schools. And that task force is a multidisciplinary task force, and they will be providing guidance at the end of June on what the fall may look like. My administrative response to that is to assemble an SAU committee of the administrators, the nurses' guidance, and your facilities directors to take a look at how, what, what learning will look like in the fall. What recommendations do we have to the local boards? And to come up with a plan that considers lots of different perspectives, like personal protective equipment, if that's required. Social distancing. I do know that one of my superintendent colleagues, for instance, there's a recommendation out there from the National School Bus, whatever the organization is, about social distancing on buses. I know that one of my colleagues today actually measured out a bus and figured out that we can fit 30 kids on a bus if they're socially distanced. That could have, that could have an effect on your busing in the fall, if that's one of the recommendations. So there's so many things up in the air right now, and so many things to consider that I feel like I need a power committee structure to consider all those different angles and make recommendations. To consider all those different angles and make recommendations to your board. The other thing I want the board to think about is you've been providing lunches. And some of the summer feeding sites are not going to open this year. And so Mr. Waring has been working with Fresh Picks. On coming up with a way to feed the kids until the end of June, because we've been granted a waiver to do that. And potentially becoming a summer feeding site for more than just Northwood. Over the summer to make sure that our families that are having difficulty acquiring food are taken care of. So we'll be bringing that back to you. It's really complex. What I'm thinking right now is your vendor. Is really good at knowing what the rules are and getting the communication from the state. So I'm thinking about maybe proposing to Northwood that you become a summer feeding site. For the, for the region. That doesn't give you any like financial benefit, but it keeps your kids fed. And the other, and the other kids in the, in the area. Yeah, I got you Shane. The other. I just received a waiver tonight, today that allow us to do weekend meals. So I'm looking into that right now, too. Shane, go ahead.
Yeah, just what, oh, can you just clarify a region? Is it just a district or is it like more than that?
So look, a lot of the times like summer feeding sites might be like a camp, right? A summer camp that has cafeteria so they can produce the meals. A lot of those summer feeding sites aren't open. So I've got to get the information from the site on what's not going to be open. It would probably Northwood Nottingham and Stravert would be my, my proposal, most likely. Because it's easier for us to manage, right? Because there's a connection. Then maybe have Fresh Picks do it because the other districts don't have. The ability to do that because their, their, their directors don't work during the summer. So it's all just sort of forming right now, but it's things I'm thinking about. The other issue is Bob Young got in touch with Jocelyn and I probably a week ago. The National Guard is looking for a, the National Guard is implementing a mobile testing site. So you know how the sites across the state? They're also going to do mobile sites and. They're looking for a parking lot with good traffic flow. To do testing in the parking lots and they've asked. If we can use the school, why the school is not in session. So I told him I would bring that to the board. So you consider that. I think, I think they would appreciate that.
So I've talked to Bob about this a bunch of times and we were trying to come up with different locations. I'm trying to do it initially, it was during the school year and our school got canceled. And I know they're talking about the flow of, you know, Bow Street going around and just coming in and quick testing and in and out. I don't see it being an issue. I know that beforehand, and I haven't read any of the updates on it, that usually there has to be like a. A police officer there. To ensure that no other people are trying to come down there to find out who's getting tested and stuff like that. Which might be an issue for us to support. Or might not be, maybe something that the National Guard could probably take on. I know they augmented 50 MPs and 50 security forces to do things like that. So. I, I just, I put it in front of the board of, do we really want that extra publicity here in our school? Or is it something that, you know, hey, it's our duty to do? I know I'm kind of torn between the both, treating both decisions of, of both, both ideas.
Yeah, I have a little bit of hesitation about it, too, just if we are going to try to use the building for other things like we're talking about being a food location. Like what else might come up that we are going to want people to feel like they can come there if they need to do a pickup? Obviously, like the playgrounds and things are closed, but if it's going to be a really sensitive. Issue of not letting other, anybody through, like we want our school to still be a hub for our students and families that as we need to use it. So I just worry about that. Publicly maybe being a deterrent for people to like feel like, oh, well, we can't go there right now. And there might be some miscommunication on that, or I don't know, I just, I feel like I need to think about it a little bit more and just kind of. See more of the details of it to really see how it will affect us otherwise.
The only other detail I have from Bob is it's one day a week, right Shane?
Yeah, they usually, it's not, it's gonna, it's not going to be every day. And this to kind of give you an idea of what it will look like. If you going up to 104, you have some family care place over on the right that parking lot, they got that white tent. It's pretty much exactly like that. So it doesn't really take up much spot, space. It's not military like something like you would see on some kind of movie or anything like that. So like it, it, it just, you drive in, it's like a drive-through like you see on the TV. You know, they do the swabs or they take your temperature kind of thing. So it's not militaristic looking, so don't worry about that. But yeah, I'm pretty sure it's only one day a week. And I think they try to do like mid-weeks and stuff like that, so. I don't know, maybe if, do you know what the timeframe is that we have to make this decision? I know it's been in the works for a while, so I don't think it's something that's like a diehard emergency or not.
Didn't really indicate when they needed a decision by. Do you remember that, Jocelyn?
No, I'm looking back at the email. I don't. See anything.
I mean, I'm thinking, this is Brian, that it would, you drive into the driveway right on Route four. And you would go left parallel to Route four to go pick up food. And I think that the, the food pickup stops like sometimes like, like 10, it's like something like that. So then that would potentially be a conflict for people that were coming in in the morning. But if you were getting tested, you'd come in, I assume, and you'd drive down the hill by the playground and the tent would be set up in the big parking lot down there somehow. And I mean, I mean, we could even probably stipulate that they can't start testing until after 10 o'clock and then we won't have.
Starts at 11. It's 11 to seven, the day they're there.
So, so then we're not even going to have pickup, food pickup issues because that'll be at a different time, so. That makes that a little easier and separated at least.
I'm in support of it. It feels, it feels urgent and timely and a benefit to our community and, and yeah.
So on that, I, I, and I kind of feel that same, same way, Jess. The thing is too, is the National Guard right now is just trying to find as many places as possible. If this thing blows up, if we need to do thousands of tests per day or something like that, or. Whatever it is that they, you know, have to do. So they're pre-planning. This is like something like, okay, if the crap hits the fan type thing, we need places everywhere. All right, so even if we say yes, it's probably not going to happen.
Okay, it might not happen, right?
Yeah, so just, that's another thing, too. So they're just looking for areas, potential areas. For example, they, to place people in quarantine, there's five tiers, tier one through five. They've been working on trying to find places that, for that, hotels, shelters and stuff like that for people. So I mean, they're just, they're just planning as much as possible.
Maybe it would be appropriate for the school board message to be that we're open to it. If it, if it looks like more of a reality, would like more details. Does that sound like an appropriate message for everyone?
Yeah, that sounds good. That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm just writing that down. Just give me a second. We need to set a graduation date now. Your last.
No, so just to give you a heads up, the Friday before our Friday, 26, I believe it is, or the 29th?
The 29th, Co-Brown?
Yeah, that, that would be the Co-Brown graduation at 1400. They're doing a parade. I'm in coordination with them on that, so it would have to be a different day from that.
Yeah, typically you have it on Thursday.
Yep.
So you're gonna have it on Thursday, the 4th?
Fourth.
Right? And then typically your eighth graders don't go to school on Friday, right?
Right. Well, I mean, it's a school day. But a lot of them don't show up. Or in this case, log in. But if they've caught up on all their work, Friday is the catch-up day anyway, so.
I mean, it's not a, you know, it's not the best, it's still thoughtful, I guess. So I guess my recommendation for normalcy would to keep it on that Thursday.
It'll be Tuesday, the 4th of June, that would be a, a board meeting, which usually we have a, a quick board meeting and then we go to graduation.
Yeah, you have an early board meeting just to take care of business and then move on to graduation.
Right. I, I don't know if graduation would be earlier in the day or whatever because it's free mobile learning, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're still figuring out the logistics, so we're thinking about a bunch of different parts. But we really like what Co-Brown's doing, so if we were going to do something like that, then we could do that earlier in the day. And then we still have to figure out, as I said, the logistics of any other pieces. So it could certainly be earlier in the day and not interfere with the board meeting.
So you want me to give you some details about Co-Brown's doing for the parade?
Sure, you can, but I have.
They, they, we, we put it out to the kids already. We had, you have some surprises like Northwood has some surprises that they're going to be pretty cool psyched about. But it's on the 29th, it's at 1400 and excuse me, 2 PM to 2:30 PM. And it's not a parade type thing because we probably could do that for the elementary school because it's going to be small amount of cars.
You gotta do like a drive-through, right?
Yeah, so we could, what, but for Co-Brown, what we're doing, what we told them to do. Is we're telling the kids whoever wants to participate, there's 180 kids at, in the class. You start at Hannaford's, you end at Johnson's and then they're going to take a big huge. What's called droid type picture with the kids in the cars with their heads sticking out. And that's going to be like their class picture, they're going to be spaced out at Johnson's. But there's no real like beginning or end of the parade. So all parents, all faculty members, all that would be lined up on Route four somewhere from Hannaford's to Co-Brown. And the kids are going to decorate their cars and honk horns and wave and stuff like that. But because there's so many cars, you're not going to have a police car in the front and one in the back leading the whole pack. Because if we have 150 cars, that's going to be quite impossible. But that is something we could do differently for Northwood because there's only like 40 to 50 cars that are going to be in there. So and of course, with more responsible drivers with parents in there instead of kids. So that it's up to whatever we really want to do for Northwood Elementary School. And Scott, like you were saying, for the guidance from the governor, you can do drive-throughs. So we could probably start at Hannaford's, do a parade all the way up to. Now they are to the elementary school and do a drive-through to Plumbwood thing. I, I don't know, that's up to you guys, if you, if that's something you guys want to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really going to leave that up to Jocelyn and Adrian and, and the, and Northwood School. They have more context than I do. Don't think I haven't given them the ideas that have made them uncomfortable, so. So, you know, we'll see what they come up with, but I think I have trust that they will make it as special as we can. And other than that, I, there's some things I don't want to, you know, disclose in a public meeting.
Absolutely.
Because I think surprises are nice, so. Okay. CARES Act money. So there seems to be some confusion between the federal and the state government about CARES Act money. And how that's going to be allocated to school. The original guidance that came from the Department of Education was that it would be based on your Title I allocation. And then there was another thing that came out of the federal government, the state that talked about using the Title II equitable services model. To distribute money. The commissioner is, is trying to get some guidance on that. And after that, on the 11th, I'll be going to a webinar that allow us to apply for those funds. If it's based on 85% of your Title I allocation, it'll be somewhere between $55,000 and $60,000. If it's based on your Title II, it's going to be lower than that. So I also have, I also feel like we've been tracking your COVID-19 unexpected expenses. And. I mean, you're certainly not going into a deficit over there. You're paying some contracts that you're not getting full service for. Things like that that we're recording as losses. But my suspicion is that depending on what it looks like in fall, your real expenses. May come then. So I want to be careful about spending any CARES Act money. In this fiscal year because you may need it in the fall. So as soon as I attend the webinar and get the guidance and the numbers loaded into the grant system, I'll update you about that. That money's for flexible use, you know, maybe. That the administration decides they want to replace 20, well, you already did it, you already did the technology purchase, right? Yes. You know, maybe that we need to buy protective equipment or screening thermometers or other things depending on whatever's recommended. But so I would encourage us not to sort of like. Keep that as a little rainy day fund that we'll definitely need. And even if we don't need it, we can go retroactive until the day that we went on remote learning. So you're not going to lose it if you don't use it right now. And I think it would be smart. To sort of save it to see what the fall is going to look like, right? I mean. If you have distancing issues on buses, you may be looking at additional bus runs. If you're going to have, one of the little activities that I'm going to do over the next couple of weeks is. Layout six, find a standard classroom and layout six foot circumferences to see how many students. I can actually fit in a classroom if that's come, you know. We're over planning. And we're planning for the worst and hoping for the best, so. You know, there may be, there may be some recommendations that come out about. You know, staggering school days to reduce the amount of kids in the building and dividing the kids into cohorts less than. 10. Which is about half a class size, so we're just going to have to wait and see. But those are some of the things we're working on. And so I would recommend that those funds, we don't really touch until we know what we're going to need. Because the thing about it is your fiscal year is going to close, right? And you have a fund balance. And then you're going to start 7-1. And you don't know what it's going to look like, so does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that's very good advice.
You know, the, the other thing that I did was you had an emergency order 38 come out, I think it was about 32 colon 11. That had to do with entities that hadn't budgeted yet and how they can expend. You know, they hadn't had their meetings. As I looked through that RSA and went back to 32 colon 7, I think it is. It really occurred to me that if we could get an emergency order that had to do with easing some restrictions on the fund balance. Like allowing the boards to take a certain percentage. And move it into the next year, that might be really helpful. So I have made that phone call to the commissioner's office to. Just sort of suggest maybe that would be helpful and I haven't heard back yet. So I'm trying to consider different options. What I don't want to get us is a budget. Problem because our expenses go too high and we have no way to cover those, so. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any other questions on COVID-19? Okay. Next on the, my section is we need to determine the last day of staff. And I don't know if Jocelyn's made that recommendation, I can't remember from two weeks ago, but if she has. What?
I think she did last meeting. I think she did last meeting.
No, we did, at our last meeting, we picked a last day for students, and then we discussed the need to pick a last day for staff, and also perhaps for giving some professional development days or being aware of flexible with all that has happened. So, and then we were going to get some recommendations, I think, at this meeting.
So for professional staff, I would like to recommend that they have their last day be Friday, June 12th. That gives them some time to work on report cards, work on their purchasing for next year, and then engage in some professional development and planning for next year. For paraprofessionals, not neck tutors, but just regular paraprofessionals, I would say that their last day could be June 5th. And then for neck tutors, I would say that their last day could be June 9th. They have about two days' worth of work to do beyond student school year.
Okay. I will make a motion to adopt Friday, June 12th as the last day for professional staff. And June, did you say 7th for neck tutors?
I do 9th for neck tutors.
9th for neck tutors, and did you say, sorry, 5th or 7th for?
5th for the.
5th for paraprofessionals, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
And who was that, the second, was that Jessica Boudreaux? Oh, Stephanie, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, any discussion, questions, conversation?
Can I just clarify, Mr. Winslow, can I just clarify, would hourly staff be paid for their full contracts?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you decided, you decided that when this started.
Jess, I know the questions will be asked, so I just wanted to put it up there.
Right, good job, it keeps my inbox empty, so.
Yeah. Do we need to amend that, then?
No.
Or is it under?
You already made that, you made that decision months ago.
Yeah, back it, yeah, first meeting, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so Brian Winslow is a yes, Stephanie Arroyo?
Yes.
Shane Wells?
Yes.
Shirley Glennon?
Yes.
And Jessica Boudreaux, no problem, Jessica Boudreaux?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. So that's the last day.
Next, we had a request in the town for an updated CIP. Just a minute.
Sorry about that.
Trying to screen share and it's not. Hey Nate?
Yeah, there it is.
You got it? Or is that the Steve Robert thing?
No, I can see it, CIP.
I can see it.
Okay, Jocelyn, I can't see it on my screen, so I'm gonna let you lead this discussion. First, is it the right CIP?
Can you scroll down a little bit for me?
I can't.
You can't see it.
It says Northwood School CIP.
Oh, I know, but on my screen, I can't, just hold on.
Oh.
It says 2018 to 2028, Northwood School CIP.
Yeah, I sent them two today, and I just wanna make sure. Anyway, I updated the sign on the second one, so if this one, although you can't scroll, we're not gonna be able to see that row anyway.
Hold on.
Or the color coding key.
It doesn't work.
I got it, is this it?
There you go. And that is, that is the correct one. So these, I, so in terms of updating, I have not added any items without input from the board. But I have gone through and just marked by different colors where we've already purchased things or have budgeted for things, because we're planning on purchasing them. So if there is a, if there is color in the box, that means that they have either already been purchased or we're planning to purchase them. So for example, the computer replacement plan for next year, that's part of our technology plan. Every year, we replace about 20% of our devices that is colored blue, because it has been included in next year's budget. They have not yet been purchased. The paving front, we had originally, when we developed the CIP, planned to do that in the fiscal year 2019. That actually happened this year, so I left the dollar amount in the 2019 box to show that's when we had planned to do it. But the yellow shows that we paid for it using 2020 funds, and same with the basketball court. And then, Mr. Rooning, if you wanna scroll down a little bit. And then all of that other stuff, the locker replacement, kitchen, office, engineer, and lighting is all older stuff. And then the sign, we had not planned, we're ahead of ourselves on that one, because we had not planned to do that for a while. That is highlighted blue, because we are planning to purchase it, but have not yet identified funding sources specifically. Anything else you need from me?
Can you scroll up again? So the computer replacement plan, shouldn't that just keep on continuing on, or are we gonna reevaluate every five years because of cost?
We need to reevaluate it, and then also we included it up to 2023, because that's when our next technology plan will run out. So we didn't wanna get ahead of ourselves if we didn't have sort of backup to document why it was a need. Everything okay over there?
Like the Winslow house.
Yeah. Oh, house, you got that right. I, I mean, I think this is the updated one, and so this is just gonna go for Bob Strobel. Is it the planning board that they need, they're just trying to keep it updated?
Yeah.
Sorry, my phone's ringing.
Can you scroll down again? So on Officer, Officer, yeah, Office Engineer Study, maybe putting in a office fix somewhere in there? Like a staged, I don't know, every three years or something? I, if, I mean, if that's something we just always wanna put in a warrant article and see if it passes, or do we wanna actually start budgeting for it? Or, you know, sometime down the future, use, you know, surplus funds? So I don't know, that should be something we should add.
What do you want, you wanna add what, office?
Upgrade, yeah.
Improvements?
Yeah.
Improvements, yeah, that sounds good.
And how much money do you wanna put in there?
You know, I'm trying to, I'm kinda getting ahead of myself here, because I'm thinking of like capital improvement, you know, reserve funds, like, that we have for warrant articles, that is for, so. But I think if we, I don't know. Scott, you know what I'm trying to say? You know, something like that.
Not really, Shane, I'm sorry.
We have all our emergency funds, warrant article funds that we do every, yeah, the building improvements and all that. So that would, something would be office improvement, so if we wanna do, we could take it out of there. But is it something also we could put in here to, you know, say, hey, in 2028, there's really nothing there, we've done most of our stuff, I mean, paving should be, should last more than 10 years. Cross fingers, you know, this locker replacement should last 15 to 20 years, so we're gonna save money there. So in 2028, let's see if we can raise $200,000 to make sure that, you know, the office does get done if it never passes in a warrant article. That's what I'm trying to say.
Jocelyn, do you remember what the price was for the office rework?
It was like 400.
Did you not?
I think it was like 450.
Oh, no, that's the whole school.
Oh, yeah, just the office, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, like, if you're like seeing my whole face right now, it's really, my iPad is really small and it's, I'm getting old.
All right, so I'm gonna email the architect, because I'm still connected with him, and see if he can give me the, what the number, what the numbers were for just the office, and then I'll stick it in a blank year. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Like, 2025 is blank.
Yeah, let's do that.
I just wanna point out, obviously, the roof is a pretty big number, so just keep that in mind. But, I mean, we can have this conversation when we have numbers to talk about, but.
Right, all right, so I'll make that change, and then we'll get that off to the town, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay.
No, well, it's good, man.
All right. And then in your packet on page 15 is your Champions lease for next year.
The only question I had that to start was, I know, like, right now, we've fulfilled everything through the end of the year with our current contracts, but if we are not able to do after-school care and that sort of thing in the fall, depending on, you know, limitations with COVID, I'm just curious, I'm just kinda opening up for discussion, like, what this might look like. I don't know, it just kinda, it came to mind as a concern.
Right, so you're talking about what the services will look like?
Right, yeah.
So that, that's your service contract? This is?
Okay, so it's separate.
It gives permission for them to use the building?
Oh, okay, okay.
We have to do yearly? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So if that's okay, I'm sorry, Brian?
No, go ahead.
So if it's okay with everybody, somebody would move it for the board chair?
Yeah.
And then we would sign it?
Go move it. Can I get a second?
Yeah, anybody want a second, that?
Second.
Okay, so that was Mr. Wells and Ms. Glennon to re-sign the lease agreement with Champions. Any more, any questions, conversation? Okay, Brian Winslow is a yes, Stephanie Arroyo?
Yeah.
Shane Wells?
Yes.
Shirley Glennon?
Yes.
And Jessica Boudreaux?
Yes.
Okay, so that is unanimous as well.
So Brian, we'll Doc assign that to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna give you a little paving update, Mr. Waring and Ms. Young are working hard. Well, not Ms. Young so much, but Mr. Waring.
Thanks, Mr. Rooning.
She's working really hard at identifying what the issues are, but he's working really hard on engaging the vendor, so we'll hopefully have some resolution to that shortly, okay?
Thank you.
She's working hard on other things. And that's it for me.
Okay, are there any questions for the superintendent, both superintendent's report? Okay, I'm gonna move on to student services.
Yes, so in my report, you can see that I sent out an indicator 11. What that is, is your preschool students who started initial evaluations. And what you want is 100% complete, and that's what we have. It's saying that we had three that started, and we had them all completed in the official timelines. That's just a quarterly thing that they send out to us, so I wanted to send that out to you. And that is specific to Northwood. Additionally, not in my report, because it was very brief, there's not been a lot to report on that I could put together in a writing. Much like Ms. Young, I have been working, trying to figure out what summer school ESY may look like and what we could do. As Mr. Rooning had shared, we worked as administrators to try to figure out what it might actually be able to do, planning for three different ways. And I had Mrs. Brewer reach out to, Mrs. Brewer and the teachers reach out to parents to find out what they would be interested in, kinda like a survey, not that they had a choice. We were very clear that they didn't have a choice, but just making sure that we could try to service them in the best possible, saying, if we had ESY and it was remote, would you wanna participate? If it was in-person, would you wanna participate? If it was a hybrid, would you wanna participate? Because ESY is a choice, we recommend it as a special team for students who need it, but then it's a choice whether they're going to. And as of right now, most parents are willing to do whichever way we set forward. And, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're assessing it in the safest way possible. And that's all for my report, unless there's any other questions.
Oh, what I can see is it says Nottingham on the copy we have in the report?
It should've said Northwood, I can double-check.
Okay.
We get three of them, and Mary puts them in, so that could've been a little mistake, but I will say yours is 102.
All three districts got 100%.
That's correct, I just must've missed the Nottingham on the print. My apologies, I should've caught that, I did not.
No, totally fine, I just wanted to make sure we're looking at the right data.
Yeah, all three districts were 100%.
Thank you, are there any other questions for Mr. Byrne? Okay, thank you, we're gonna move on to new business board goals and strategic plan. I took what we did last time, and Wordsmith did a tiny bit, and then put it together here. So I think we've been over what's on, you know, it's on page 20. And I think our plan was to cross-reference to our school board, I mean, excuse me, our strategic plan, on which another copy arrived in the mail, so thank you very much, and hopefully we'll have that there. Does anybody, if you've had a chance to look through this, if you need a moment now, is there anything that we'd like to edit, change around in our goals? Okay, I'll kinda, I don't remember offhand exactly everything that I did, but I merged a few together, I think. Goal A, I merged two of the measurements together. Establish a metric to measure student engagement and student-led initiatives. So those are kind of some of the things that we went over, but if we're okay with this, then we could just take a motion to adopt these goals.
I motion to adopt these goals as written.
Thank you. Okay, so that was Mr. Wells and Ms. Arroyo. And unless anybody has any more to add, I'll just do a roll call. So Brian Winslow is a yes, Stephanie Arroyo?
Yes.
Shane Wells?
Yes.
Shirley Glennon?
Yeah.
Jessica Boudreaux?
Yes.
Okay, so we've adopted our goals unanimously. Thank you.
Did everybody get copies of this, hard copies of the strategic plan?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
And Shirley and Jessica, did you get the books that I sent you?
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, good. And then our other new business was our website discussion. I think that was what Mr. Robert had presented with us before, so I think we're done there, we're holding off for now. On old business, we had put out an RFP for bids for our sign. I believe we did not get any, but do you wanna discuss that, Mr. Rooning?
Yeah, no bids came in. That doesn't mean you can't purchase a sign, what it means is that you followed your policy when it came to getting bids on items over $10,000. I have a suspicion you didn't get any bids, because I think probably some sign companies aren't open. So you certainly could go with New Hampshire Sign and their quote, given that you didn't get any bids. So if you decide to do that, I think you're gonna have to come up with about $35,000, and we need to figure out where that is to come from. You want some options?
Sure.
Okay, so you could take it out of your year-end fund balance? Okay, so you could take it out of your year-end fund balance. Um, or you isolated ninety-five thousand dollars in one-time adequacy money via warrant article, and you put that into one of your building capital reserve, I think your building repair and maintenance capital reserves. Um, so you have the money in, in, in that account. To pay for the balance of the sign after the insurance payment.
I recommend using the, um, adequacy, uh, fund balance. Um, uh, I think we planned, kind of talked about that when we first knew that we were going to get this money, that it could be possibly that we could use it for the sign. Um, any year fund balance, um, I think we had the discussion last month about making sure we give back the town as much money as possible due to the, um, unemployment and taxes and maybe lowering the tax rate for the people of Northwood, so um, I would recommend using the, uh, fund balance, not the fund balance, the adequacy fund balance.
You mean the capital reserve?
Yes, the ninety-five thousand. Is it the adequacy funds, though?
Yeah, but we put it into a capital reserve.
Yes.
You know, it's sitting in your, uh,
Yes.
It's sitting in your, um, building, maintenance and repair capital reserve.
Right, yeah.
I think that sounds appropriate, especially considering the damage to the old sign. I mean, it's repairs.
Yeah.
And improvement, but.
Yeah, and I think in that, without me looking up C R F balances, you had twenty and you added ninety-five, so you have
One fifteen.
One fifteen plus interest, so.
So I guess I'll make a motion to use the capital improvement, um, building reserve fund uh, up to thirty-five thousand dollars, or do we, I, do we, do we have the exact number, Mr. Rooney?
I don't have the exact number. I put that in the packet a couple of times. What I would do is make a motion to say the balance of the sign after the insurance payment.
Okay, I make a motion to use the capital building improvement fund balance, um, uh, up to, um, minus the, um, insurance claim on the old sign and the remaining fund balance to be expanded out of the capital and build improvement plan. That was a roundabout way, but I think we got it.
Second.
Okay, so that was Shirley Glennon for the second.
Yeah.
Are there any, uh, any conversation? Okay, I'm gonna I, I'm gonna say I will, um, vote for this because the board had voted to, um, put out for, for this particular sign to put out, go out to bid for it. Um, but I do, I feel like we, you know, I feel like we, we could have done this a little bit uh, simpler and cheaper, but I will, because it's, it's what the board wanted to do and because we decided to go out to bid for it, I support it, so just wanted to share that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Brian Winslow is a yes, Stephanie Arroyo.
Yes.
Shane Wells.
Yes.
Shirley Glennon.
Yes.
Jessica Boudreaux.
Yes.
Okay, so that's unanimous, uh, for the sign. Um, so on to our parking lot. We have ongoing for the school board newsletter, and I think we're backing off down to like, um, biannual based on our goals now. Um, school safety is ongoing. Strategic client, plan, um, as we discussed our goals, we were discussing our strategic plan as well. Um, we're gonna hold off on our athletic director and we have been discussing eighth grade celebrations, so um, is there anything on the parking lot items that people want to bring up and, and discuss more right now?
Not a parking lot, but, um, I did one thing I didn't see the, on their, uh, committee updates. I just want to go over a couple of things on, uh, education committee with Co-Brown that I went to.
Sure.
Yeah, after that.
Yeah, it's, it's on the agenda, it's coming up on the agenda.
It's, it is? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, um, I'm, I'm on a computer, so I usually have the agenda in front of me, so sorry, I apologize. So, well, I'll wait, sorry.
Okay, yeah, no problem. So that's parking lot, and then we have a school board timeline, and then we'll get to committee, so, committee updates, so. Um, so we're good with our parking lot, uh, on our timeline. We're gonna, looking at, at May and into June. So May, we have update on summer maintenance and facilities. We got one this evening, thank you. Um, discussion of summer school proposals with the board that's still waiting on guidance for summer school. Um, renewal of lease, we just did that. Kindergarten grade one registration, discussed that that's going to take place in August, hopefully in person, but we shall see. Um, a teacher appreciation day is this week, I believe, is teacher appreciation week, and, um, Mr. Alfred updated us a bit on what's going on. Volunteer appreciation day. I'm not sure when exactly volunteer appreciation day is, but.
Every day.
Every day.
Wednesday, July first.
Okay.
Second that.
I'll, I'll just move on, um. Getting discussion of our graduation awards. Did you want to talk about, um, volunteer appreciation, so? Okay, remote, remote meetings are awkward, guys.
Yeah.
Um, the, the summer school employment, um, posted, we're, so we're, we're still, I mean, we're still not quite sure what's happening with summer, so.
So, and just for your, um, reference, what we are staffed for summer. Um, tho- those were posted and those positions were filled, assuming we're having a summer program a couple of months ago.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, we've been discussing our surplus funds, our general review with the board, and we did that, um, previously. Notify support staff no later than Ju- June first, and you were telling us about people moving around, so we're on, it sounds like we're on target for that. On, and then the unique impact, so I think we're, we're doing pretty good for June. Excuse me, I think we're doing pretty good for May.
Yep.
Okay, um, in June, we'll be talking about, uh, projected class sizes, which we've already done. Uh, hiring needs for professionals, support staff coming for the year. Uh, plans for summer curriculum work and nominations, plans for summer maintenance, which we've discussed. Nominations for summer school employments, which we'll learn more about, nominations for fall coaching, which, again, we'll learn more about. And then, um, exit interviews, so. I think we're okay with our, um, school board timeline. So, committee updates, Mr. Wells, why don't you go first?
Um, yeah, so, um, there's been a lot of, uh, turnover at Co-Brown, good turnover, retirements, uh, some are also good, um, if you heard anything, uh, but um, the assistant headmaster position was open, um, and if everybody, if anybody knows Matt Skids, the athletic director. Uh, he got that position, um, very well deserved, uh, he's gonna do fantastic there. Um, and the athletic director is now Mr. Struthers, Sam Struthers. Um, if you know who he is, um, two great additions to Co-Brown. Um, and then there's some other ones, there's some reading specialists and some other, um, positions that don't mean too much, but the athletic director one, I'm glad I'm on this part of, uh, the education committee, and I do, uh, it's so interesting. I've been to about five meetings for interviews at Co-Brown, and it's really nice that they pick one from each, um, district. Um, and, um, and we get to pretty much hire the, um, people, the teachers at Co-Brown, which is fantastic. Um, so when I'm long gone, if you guys ever want that position, take it, because it's, uh, it's very educational. Anyways, um, so on that athletic, I've been talking to the athletic committee and also the education committee about long-range planning, and in two thousand eighteen, they did their ten-year C I P plan for Co-Brown. Um, and it's a living, breathing document, just like ours is, um, so a lot of that, um, I guess, um, feeding program they're talking about between, um, the middle school and the Bridges program. So I'm gonna bring a lot of that off of the Co-Brown side to the school board and to the administration, so we could, um, better work together. I don't, I don't see there's really any friction between us, but just to make it more cohesive. So, uh, just to give you an idea of what education's about, education committee is about and where we're going. That's it.
Great, thank you. Um, the, uh, policies committee just met before this meeting. Uh, we discussed an exit interview policy, we discussed, um, suicide prevention and awareness policy, we discussed social media policy and, um, and curriculum, thank you, curriculum review policy, so, um, made some suggestions and we'll have a few for first reading under next meeting, and, um, we'll be working on that, so. Did any other committees meet?
I also have a question about that, Brian, just, I'm getting started. What's the best way for me to reach out, being new to these committees, like, who is scheduling and that sort of thing? I've assumed things are quiet because of, you know, us all being remote and in current conditions, but I also don't want to just be thinking if there's, you know, people trying to plan something and they just don't know that I'm assigned to it. So if you guys have any, um, advice on that, just how to get started, introductions and that kind of thing would be great.
Looks like Mr. Rooney's looking up what, what you're on, so.
Thank you, Shirley. I have the same question. I, I don't know if I'm the one who's just not initiating and I should, or if I will be reached out to.
Right, thanks. I'm, I'm glad I'm not the only one, because I was like, oh no, maybe I should have been doing something that I didn't know about, but
Yeah.
It's always a learning curve, so.
So Jocelyn will notify you when there's a clubs committee meeting, Jessica?
No, I won't, um, but I will let Ms. McDonald know, she runs it.
Alright, um, tech committee. Steve?
Tech.
Yes, our next meeting is, um, uh, next meeting is supposed to be, I believe it's next Thursday.
Next Thursday, okay.
Are you gonna do that remotely?
Yes.
We, we do meetings on, we do meetings on Fridays now.
On Fridays?
That's right, yes, we do, that's right.
What time, do you know what time that meets on Friday then, for now? Just so I
The last one was, was ten AM, I believe.
Ten AM, okay.
But I'll, I'll actually, um, I'll get with the, the chair on that and let, and ask, ask Amanda to make sure she puts that out, but, uh,
Yeah, if you guys can just loop me into the email, um, Thursdays and Fridays are a little crazy for me with work right now, so I'll do what I can to jump in, but that might be a tough time, but if you can just loop me in on the email, I'll do what I can.
I'll do that. I'll make sure she has that. It is, it is supposed to be on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Right here.
Um, Shirley, you're on the calendar committee. You don't need to worry about that until much later.
Okay.
Um, facilities committee. When Jocelyn has a facilities committee meeting, she'll let Shirley and Stephanie know.
Okay.
Uh, no negotiations, no teacher. Emergency management committee is Stephanie, is that correct? So Jocelyn, that's you, right?
What's the emergency management, is that
Like your, right, like your lots were
So Shane is not on that anymore, or Shane and Stephanie?
No, just Stephanie.
But, uh, is that the safety committee?
Yeah, your emergency management committee.
Yeah, I think, um,
I think Shane was still on it.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm gonna be on for, for law enforcement, so.
Both of you?
I think, yeah, I think it was gonna be both of us this time. I thought, I have to go back and look at my notes, but.
Doesn't matter, I'm just gonna add you. Got it. Alright, I made that change. Um, and then communication, that's the board. Um, Brett, uh, N H S B A delegate. With Jessica, and that won't happen until next year.
Oh. Okay.
Um, and I think that covers it all.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything, so. Yeah, no, thank you, same. I mean, and I have the same question for the joint school board, because I know I'm representing Northwood for a couple, or maybe just one, and maybe we'll talk about this on Monday, but.
Yeah, we can bring, if I don't think of to bring
Well, you gotta, you gotta, so, so for This is sort of like a scaling up activity, right? So the first thing we need to do is figure out how to do our board meetings, right? We've become a little more efficient than that. We have seven board meetings a month out of the S A U. The next is for me to add the policy committees in, right? Those are, that's one of the board's primary roles. And those other committees will get added in as time goes on. Um, it's just very, very difficult to Zoom all day and then Zoom other meetings, so it, it, it's taxing, so.
Yeah, I'm, and, and I'm totally fine with that. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something I should have done.
I mean, I don't know if the joint board will review that on Monday night, um, it's just a strange time.
Yeah, for sure.
Shirley, before we, uh, move on, when, when you do finally meet with the clubs committee, um, just to let you know, I had requ- I had been on that committee before, and I just requested, um, in data about how many students are participating in different clubs, so if you could just try to follow up on that with, um, with Ms. McDonald, that would be, I think, helpful for us in, in tracking our goals of student engagement and things like that, so.
Yeah, I think that's Jess's, but yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, okay, so, um, future agenda items, the only one that I wrote down is we're going to discuss the, the website digital integration, whatever we're gonna call that, but, um, I was just calling it a website discussion, so, um, did you have anything else noted down?
Yeah, you gotta make a mobile tip. Well, never mind, you already told me what to say about mobile testing. Um, that's it.
Right.
I would, um, probably put, um, finalized graduation plans. Is that something we should put on there?
Sorry.
Or go into non-public on it?
Well, you didn't really have a reason
Um,
to go into non-public.
Detrimental to the kids' health.
What?
Detrimental to the kids' health.
But it doesn't fall under any of the, uh,
Yeah.
categories.
It'll, it'll tarnish our superintendent's reputation if, um, he left the surprise out.
If there even is, right. Jocelyn, could you do me a favor? When you get a good frame for your graduation plans, could you just email me a bulleted list and I'll distribute it to the board so they can see it? And then people can get in touch with me separately if they have input. How does that sound?
Fair.
Works for me.
Okay.
Right? Okay.
So we only have, next month, next meeting?
Yeah. You have standing agenda items that you gotta take care of.
Yeah, but no additional.
Well, the visit, you're gonna have business next time. Here's the problem for Glenn. Glenn, the county commissioner, and his county commissioner meetings are Thursdays, the first and third Thursday of the month. So we're gonna start, we're gonna start tightening up your fund balance, so at the next meeting, he's, I'm gonna move him to the end of the agenda, okay? And then as soon as he's done with it, his county commissioner meeting starts at five, when he's done with that, he'll zoom in and be able to attend the meeting. And we'll be able to have those discussions. Okay?
Okay. Great, we, um, we have a joint board meeting, May eleventh, and then our next regularly scheduled meeting is May twenty-first, and then June fourth. Uh, after that, and that's also now gonna be, um, graduation, if I remember correctly. Um, is there any closing public comments?
Okay, um, I'm gonna start with Ginger because I forgot her when we did the original, and I already apologized via private text. So, um, Ginger, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Ginger, do you have any public comment?
No, I'm all set, but it's good to know that I had a text that I didn't see.
It, it came right through on, it, it came through on the chat window on your computer. You probably saw a little bing. Look at the bottom and it says chat.
No, I missed it, but I'll, I'll practice looking for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Last two digits, one, four, please state your name and address if you have a public comment.
All set, no comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last two digits, six, seven, please state your name and address if you have a comment.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Last two digits, seven, zero, please state your name and address if you have a comment.
No comment.
Thank you. Last two digits, 97, please state your name and address if you have a comment.
No comment, thanks.
Thank you.
It's like something from, like from The Hunger Games. It's like so robotic, waiting for a comment from the public.
So that time I did actually get everyone, I did not forget about Ginger. So everyone did, if there was anyone who wanted to speak, I did call them.
Great, any board members, if you'd like to address the board?
The parades have been going great, that's been, it's been really fantastic. So those will keep going, I don't think they're going to continue throughout the summer, but we do have another month or so left of birthday parades. So just, we usually have them on Thursdays at 5:00 or on Saturdays at 4:45 to, or say 5:00. So if anybody else wants to join in parade, fire department and the police department and many locals are going around town wishing happy birthdays. So if you want to hear me sing Bad Boy's song, I do it over the loudspeaker. So if you want to come out and join on the parade, please do.
They've been really great, we've done over 50, I think, over 50 kids so far in Northwood and that doesn't include the June birthdays yet, so it's been really awesome.
Yes, and thank you Stephanie and Judy Loto and Colleen Crockmaw. Yep, all those that have been sending out Facebook posts and monkey surveys. It's been a great help to the community and it's getting everybody involved, so thank you.
Great, do we have any need for a non-public?
Yes.
Okay.
Under A and C.
Okay, so I, sorry, what?
I just, can you just tell me what A's here?
Portionality reputation. Reputation.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I will make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91, A colon 32, A and C.
Second.
And I only need Mr. Byrne to stay.
All right.